Good afternoon and welcome. Let me begin by expressing the board's gratitude to everyone at Penn State Brandywine for their generosity of time, dedication, and commitment in showcasing this beautiful campus and hosting our meetings. As many of you know, I consider Penn State Brandywine to be my home campus. It has been the focus of mine and my volunteer efforts and my family's philanthropy. Over the years, I've been proud to watch this campus grow in a vibrant community, especially with the additions of Residence Hall and the Student Union that the Board of Trustees approved in 2015. And I'm honored to have played a small role in preparing this campus for the future. I'm sure you have all felt the pride and dedication of the faculty, staff, students, alumni, Advisory Board members, and the community. That is what makes this campus so special, and I'm thrilled we could meet here. Please join me in thanking Chancellor Kristin Wooliver and her staff for their warm hospitality. Will you all please stand to be recognized? Kristin? We look forward to a report from Kristin during our meeting today. Now, I'm pleased to welcome our new trustees, Brian Koller and Steve Wagman. Steve, Brian? You both have very large shoes to fill with Kevin and Michael. They were great trustees. Brian Hales from Beaver Falls and is a sophomore in the Smeele College of Business. Steve is the immediate past president of the Penn State Alumni Association. Both will serve two-year terms. We look forward to having you as our colleagues and are grateful for your service and commitment to Penn State. Now, we're supposed to applaud. Before proceeding with our business of the day, I want to take a moment to remember Trustee Emeritus Robert Frye, who passed away earlier this year, and Brandywine student Tobias Mandell, who passed away on June 29th. May I ask for a moment of silence? Thank you. I'd also like to recognize a couple of emeritai trustees, Joel Myers, Ryan McCumbey, and Al Clemmons. So, thank you, gentlemen, for coming. We appreciate it. So, thank you for being here. As we begin the new academic year, we are fortunate to welcome two new academic leaders to our university. After the completion of a national search, Kimberly Lawless was selected to serve as the dean of the College of Education, beginning on September 1. Dr. Lawless comes to us from the University of Illinois at Chicago, where she was the associate dean for research in the College of Education. At the Penn State College of Medicine, Dr. Kevin Black was appointed interim dean effective July 1. Dr. Black has served as vice dean of the College of Medicine, University Park Regional Medical Campus, and as the C. McAllister Everts Chair and Professor in the Department of Orthopedics and Rehabilitation. We also have another exciting new addition to the Penn State community. On July 1, trustee Valerie Detwiler gave birth to her second child, Gabe, a beautiful baby boy and future Penn Stater. Congratulations. So, I think Valerie's on the line. So, congratulations, Valerie, and hope everything's going well at home.
Thank you.
Finally, I wish to recognize President Barron for his continued efforts to communicate the important role universities play in fostering discovery, entrepreneurship, and economic development. In June, Penn State hosted higher education leaders for APLU Research and Economic Engagement meetings. As Chair of the Commission on Economic and Community Engagement, Eric led discussions on university research, impact with public university leaders from the U.S., Canada, and Mexico. In conjunction with those meetings, he wrote an op-ed article for the Pittsburgh Tribune Review. It described how universities contribute talent development, provide advice to the private sector, and advance community development, all of which contributes to the ecosystem ripe for innovation. This is an important message, and on behalf of the board, I wish to thank him for doing his part to keep it in the public eye. Thank you, Eric. Now, moving on to the business of the day, please note that the board met this morning in executive session to discuss various privileged matters. I would like to call the meeting to order, and Frank, please report on the attendance.
All trustees are in attendance with exception of governor.
Thank you. So, all are in attendance with exception of Governor Wolf. Election of Officers of the Board of Trustees. At this time, I'll ask Frank Guadino, Secretary of the Board, to take the podium.
Thank you, Chair Dambly. As Secretary of the Board of Trustees, and in accordance with today's annual meeting, I'll be conducting the election of officers. On May 15, Juliana Potts, Chair of the Committee on Governance and Long-Range Planning, provided all trustees with a process and timeline for announcing candidates for Chair and Vice Chair. Trustees Dambly and Oldsy expressed their candidacy for Chair. Trustee Skyler presented his candidacy for the position of Vice Chair. After making their interests known, each candidate submitted a biographical sketch and a vision statement, and those materials were distributed to all members of the board. Yesterday, or this morning, rather, each candidate was provided an opportunity to make a brief presentation to the board with respect to their candidacy and to field questions from their colleagues. This process does not preclude nominations from the floor. At this time, I'd like to call for nominations for Chair of the Board, asking that the first nominator limit his or her remarks to one minute, and that the individual providing the second do so without remarks. Trustee Potts.
Thank you. It's my privilege to nominate Mark Dambly to the position of Board Chair for the upcoming year. I read with pride Mark's candidate statement and considered all we have accomplished as a board in the last couple of years under Mark and Matt's leadership. Some highlights: completion of the Huron Analysis and Report, completion of the Real Estate Task Force recommendations, creation of a dashboard and undertaking a comprehensive board assessment, advancing succession planning for key administration positions, and shepherding numerous conversations in partnership with Dr. Barron concerning every aspect of the university and Penn State health. But I'd like to focus on two themes running through Mark's time and leadership that have been meaningful to me. The first is his focus on transparency and communication. We've enjoyed biweekly communications, access to university information, and his continuing practice of addressing any issue openly, forthrightly, and decisively. You may not agree with his decision or point of view, but you know where Mark stands. Hand-in-hand with a focus on communication is the ability to listen and really hear and understand other points of view. Mark has made himself available and accessible and has been willing to listen to new ideas, consider critiques, and readily shares his thoughts on the same. Second, Mark has made spending time with students a priority, keeping our focus as a board on the future of the institution, business, and government with these future leaders. Our conversation with students as a board, and conveyed through Mark and Matt, have improved our understanding of their highest priorities, access and affordability, diversity and inclusion, and student mental health. That our students provide the framework for our work as a board has been a hallmark of Mark's tenure as Chair. Finally, my observation of Mark's style as a leader is that he is about measurable results, impatient sometimes in a good way, and putting this amazing enterprise on the best footing for long-term future success. He's done this with passion for Penn State and a consistent commitment to excellence. I urge you to join me in supporting Mark Dambly for Chair. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations for Chair? Trustee Tribach.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to nominate Bill Oldsy for the position of Chair. Bill has been a member of the board for a total of six years, and in that time, just a few of his accomplishments associated with varying committees and positions included Chair of the Academic Affairs and Student Life Committee, a member of the Executive Committee, Financial Planning and Business Committee, Government Relations Committee, the Greek Life Task Force, the Corporation for Penn State, and the Executive Committee for the most recent search for President. But more importantly, Bill has been a voice of reason at times over the last six years, my four years on the board and the years before. When emotions were high, when strife was upon us, Bill could always be counted on as a voice of reason. He was a collaborator. He was someone who could bring sides together. Bill is a consummate professional, and I'm proud to call him my friend. I'm proud to nominate him for the position of Chair of the Board.
Thank you. Trustee Tribach, is there a second?
I second the nomination.
Trustee Jubilair seconds. Are there any additional nominations for the position of Chair? Hearing none, I declare the nominations closed. I'll now call for nominations for Vice Chair. Trustee Haun.
It is my pleasure and honor to nominate Matt Skyler for the position of Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Are there any additional nominations for the position of Vice Chair? Hearing none, I declare the nominations for Vice Chair closed. The incumbent officers of the board are myself as secretary, Assistant Secretaries Carmella Mulroy Deggenhart, Crystal Straw, and Kim Wright. Treasurer is David Gray. The Assistant Treasurers are Kimberly Fisher, Sue Widomer. And in addition to the incumbents, Cheryl Gardner is being proposed for consideration as Assistant Treasurer. Our bylaws require the use of a written ballot, and so you will receive two ballots. One ballot will be for the position of Chair and Vice Chair, and will require you to write the name of your selections on the ballot. Appropriate nominations and seconds were made for Mark Dambly and Bill Oldsy for Chair, and for Vice Chair, the candidate is Matt Skyler. I'd ask that, for the benefit of our tellers, that you please write legibly on the ballots. The second ballot will list the remaining officers. For that ballot, a space is provided next to each name. Please indicate your preference by placing a checkmark next to each name that you approve. I'll now ask the board staff to distribute the ballots. Once completed and collected by the board staff, I've asked Madeline Haynes, Vice President for Commonwealth Campuses and Executive Chancellor, and Lawrence Lockman, Vice President for Strategic Communications, to serve as tellers. I'll ask that they provide their results to me in a sealed envelope, and I'll report the election results later in this meeting. For those of you who are participating in the meeting via telephone, please disconnect from your current dial-in and wait to receive your call to relay your vote per our prior communication to each of you. For those on the phone, once that relay has happened, you may dial back into the meeting. I think now that most of the ballots have been collected, you can just proceed, and we'll move forward. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We have a slate of five consent agenda items 4A through 4E to come before the board for approval. A number of trustees indicated that they would like to have a separate consideration of the budget item, so we will do that after the president's remarks. If anyone thinks that additional items should be discussed and voted on separately, please say so, and we will exclude them, that item, or items from the consent agenda as well. Ted?
You have one item.
Right. Do you want to vote on it separately, or just want an opportunity to speak to it?
Whatever's easiest for them.
Okay. Frank, Ted would like to speak to the DuBois item, so do we pull it off to consent?
I would pull it off and speak to it separately.
Okay. So, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items excluding... What numbers are they, Frank? 4E and the budget was 4A? 4C and 4E will be excluded. So, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items excluding 4C and E? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Turning now to item E, which was requested for discussion, let me first ask for a motion to approve.
Does it move?
Second? Motion's in first and second. Any discussion? Ted, this is your...
Okay. Thank you. First of all, let me say I'm totally in favor of supporting this, but I just would like to make a request of staff that for this and future Commonwealth Campus recommendations that we include a marketing plan to fill the seats at that particular campus or add seats. So, I'm requesting that we have an action item to have a marketing plan for the value that we're going to get with that wildlife and physical therapy improvement.
Eric, you responded in executive session. You'll take it under advisement and report back appropriately. Is that okay, Ted?
Wonderful.
Good, thanks. Okay, we have a motion to approve, a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carries. We have one other action item for consideration before calling on President Barron. Item 5A is the approval of lease renewals for PSRP developers. Before we vote, I'll ask trustee Ira Looper to recuse himself for this item. Yes, you have to leave. Yes. I don't often get to tell Ira what to do, so this is a good thing for me. As trustee Looper has recused himself, we will now proceed with item 5A. May I have a motion for approval? Second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Would you mind letting Ira know we can come back in? All right, Ira, thank you. All right. At this time, I'll ask President Barron to provide some remarks and context to set the stage for our consideration of Agenda Item 4C, the operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, with corresponding tuition and fees effective 2019 fall semester. Dr. Barron.
I'm pleased to share Penn State's 2019-20 operating budget with the corresponding tuition and fees effective fall semester 2019. Additional background and detail can be found in the detailed schedules provided to you this week, which I will refer to throughout this presentation. With the approval of the 2019-20 operating budget with corresponding tuition and fees effective fall 2019, the total institutional operating budget for Penn State will exceed $6.8 billion for the fiscal year that began on July 1st, a 4.8% increase over 2018-2019 total income. Well, this pie chart presents the anticipated sources of Penn State's revenue for fiscal year 2019-20. Education and general funds, which include tuition and fees, the general support portion of the state appropriation, and indirect cost recoveries provide 36.4% of operating revenue. For the fourth year, hospital and clinical revenues exceed education and general funds. Auxiliary enterprises and restricted fund activities are self-supporting and largely externally funded. They also provide reimbursement to the university for the general funds-based services that provide support for all units. General funds for agricultural research and cooperative extension, the College of Medicine, and Penn College include their share of the state appropriation, indirect cost recoveries and tuition and fees. For agriculture, it also includes federal funds. Schedule I and Tab D provides further detail regarding the total institutional operating budget and the proposed changes for the fiscal year. The 2019-20 permanent E&amp;G budget includes increases of $35.4 million in revenue and expenses, a 1.72% increase over 2018-19. This budget balances the need to fund critical priorities and mandated cost increases while keeping base tuition increases at zero for our Pennsylvania undergraduate students. The blue bars reflect changes in income in the E&amp;G budget. The tuition rate increases assumed in the budget are presented in more detail on a later slide and would provide $17.6 million. The $4.7 million increase in the appropriation incorporates the 2% growth recently approved by the General Assembly. Additional income of $13 million comes from an increase in indirect cost recovery and the continuation of the plan to gradually phase out the historic E&amp;G appropriation transfer to the College of Medicine. An additional $51,000 would be generated by the student-initiated fee. Expense growth, indicated by the green bars, includes cost increases of $32.5 million for salaries, $8.1 million for healthcare and retirement benefits, $9 million for strategic investment, $16.5 million for facility needs, $2.5 million for insurance, $2.2 million for student aid and grants and aid, and $51,000 for student-initiated activities. This growth is offset by targeted cost savings indicated by the red bar of $35.5 million. This chart shows the appropriation since 2001, including this year's total of $337.2 million. It also shows what the appropriation would have been if the 2001 number was adjusted for inflation. You can see the appropriation was cut substantially in 2011-12. We certainly appreciate the 2% increase that was approved by the General Assembly, which helps to restore the appropriation closer to the earlier level of funding. The total appropriation breakdown is shown here. The 2019-20 appropriation includes our general support line of $24.1 million, $55 million for ag research and extension, and an estimated $13.4 million for Hershey Medical Center from state and federal medical assistance funds, and $26.7 million for Penn College. Our requested appropriations submitted last November included a 6% increase in general support appropriation that would have funded the 2019-20 budget with no increase in tuition for PA resident undergraduates except for a 2% change to support the 2019-20-23 capital plan. The appropriation increase is 2%, but with targeted cost savings, we are recommending no increase for Pennsylvania resident undergraduates. These two charts compare Penn State's tuition increases from 2010-11 through 2014-15, that's in red, and from 2015-16 through 2019-20 to the Big Ten averages increases, those averages exclude Penn State, and to the change in the Consumer Price Index. The chart on the left shows the changes in resident tuition rates. You can see by the blue bars that Penn State's tuition rate increases were well below both the Big Ten average and inflation for the period 2015-16 to 2019-20. In fact, students today, in real dollars, spend less money for Penn State education than they did five years ago. The chart on the right shows similar information for non-resident rates. For both periods, Penn State's increases were below the Big Ten averages but higher than inflation. The undergraduate tuition increases assumed in the budget reflect Penn State's commitment to affordability for all students, both resident and non-resident. Pennsylvania resident tuition rates for lower-division students at University Park and at the Commonwealth Campuses remain flat for the second year in a row. The undergraduate increase for non-Pennsylvania residents is 1.95%, basically at inflation. This slide provides a summary of all of the lower-division resident and non-resident tuition rate increase percentages and their dollar amounts. Detailed tuition schedules were included in the materials that you received this week. Aggressive cost savings have allowed 38% of the budget increases over the last five years, so this is 2014-15 through 2019-20, and a picture of what the increased costs for operating the university and how it was that we achieved those costs. Aggressive cost savings efforts have allowed 38% of the budget increases over the past five years to be accomplished without adding to students' tuition costs. That total is now $178.788 million in cost savings in order to reduce tuition costs. The next largest portion has been met through increases in non-resident tuition. That's about 24% of the growth. During this same time, the state appropriation increases have supported 5% of our expense Shown another way, you can see the cost savings have been a critical component in how we have met our cost increases over the past five years. This concludes the presentation of the 2019-20 Proposed Operating Budget and Tuition and Fees Effective Fall Semester 2019. For your consideration, I am happy to take questions at this time.
I see none, Mr. Chairman. So, I don't want the public to think that we didn't talk about this. So, I think it's really important to make a couple of notes before I ask for a vote. First and foremost, I want to thank the Committee on Finance, Capital, and Business Planning for their hard work that they put into this. I want to especially thank Eric and his team, Mary Lou, David Gray, Nick Jones, and leadership he's exhibited. I think it's extraordinary that we have been able to, three times in the last five years, hold tuition increases for in-state students at zero, and on a number of our Commonwealth campuses, I think seven or eight years, zero. I may be off a little bit on the numbers, but it's an extraordinary accomplishment. And I know we've challenged the administration. The board has been very supportive of leadership in our discussions with the administration, and I just want everyone to know that, particularly the public who hasn't been engaged in those conversations, we have been fluidly conversing on this for over a month. At the forefront of our deliberations and conversations have been our acknowledgement, along with Eric's, on the affordability crisis in higher education. So, it's for that reason that we have challenged the administration to hold these costs, to harvest these savings that they're betting on, because we haven't identified all of them yet, but I don't want it to be thought that we didn't ask questions and deliberate and appropriately consider all of our options. So, thank you, Eric, and thank you for your leadership team, and Mary Lou, and Rob for your leadership on the committee. So, may I have a motion to approve Agenda Item 4C, the operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, with corresponding tuition and fees effective for 2019 fall semester? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'm pleased that Chancellor Kristin Wooliver will provide her informational report for us today. Dr. Wooliver joined Penn State Brandywine in 2014. Under her leadership, the campus has added high-demand four-year majors and secured the Invent Penn State Seed Grant to advance the entrepreneurship and innovation in partnership with local business community. She has overseen the transformation of Penn State Brandywine from a commuter campus to a residential campus with the opening of Orchard Hall, a 256-bed residence hall, and a beautiful new Student Union Building. Dr. Wooliver has helped us advance the university's commitment to educational quality, academic excellence, and student successes, while also elevating Brandywine's profile in the community and region. Chancellor Wooliver is scheduled to retire from Penn State on July 31st. Please join me in welcoming Kristin to the podium. Please join me in welcoming Kristin to the podium.
All of us, all of us at Penn State Brandywine are honored to host this meeting of the Board of Trustees. We welcome this opportunity to share the remarkable achievements of our students, faculty, staff, and alumni. We're grateful for the confidence you've shown in our campus and its future, and for your investment in our programs and our facilities. You're in one of them now. Brandywine exemplifies the university's land-grant mission of teaching, research, and service. We strive to provide a world-class education that is accessible and affordable, always, always mindful of the challenges faced by our many first-generation college students and by those who by necessity live at home and continue to work while attending classes. We are deeply engaged with our community. We reflect and embrace the diversity of the area we serve, and we support the economic strength of our region. In other words, we live the mission of Penn State University. Penn State Delaware County began in 1967 in nearby Chester, opening in temporary space beneath a roller skating rink. Humble beginnings indeed, and I am told by those who were there at the beginning that during classes you could hear the roller view. And there was also a train that went by right behind the building, and you could time classes by when the train went by. Fortunately, we relocated to our current site in 1970, when our first building was completed. Since those early days, we have experienced tremendous growth and transformation in enrollment, in academic programs, and in community impact. The most visible sign of that growth is our two newest buildings, which opened in 2017. Our Student Union, here, and our first Residence Hall have truly transformed the student experience at Brandywine. The addition of on-campus housing addressed a long-term need, and the Student Union has become a center for campus and student life, as well as a center for the community to have meetings. These projects have created a cultural shift on the campus, and they are really, really positive game changers for us. We know the board carefully evaluates capital spending, and we are thankful that you determined these projects deserved your support. Our facilities are a vital component of the Brandywine experience, but what really makes our campus exceptional is our people. We have a dedicated and caring faculty. Several have earned university-level awards over the past few years. While awards, however, are only one measure of our faculty's achievement, they certainly affirm their commitment to excellent, excellence and student success. And our faculty really do care about the students. Eight of our full-time staff are Brandywine alumni, working in marketing, athletics, admissions, information technology, and library services. Another dozen or so are part-time employees. Their desire to work at Brandywine reflects the positive experience they have as students. And their firsthand knowledge of our campus provides added perspective for sure and insights to our current and prospective students and to their families. We create lasting relationships at Brandywine. Many of our former students, faculty, and staff stay in touch. Nine alumni and former employees who joined our campus community at its beginning, 1967 and 68, have been back on campus within the past two years to participate in events. That's 50 years later. Take a look at the before and after photos. What a testament to their connection with Brandywine. And at least one of those people is here today. I will not ask him to stand. Many colleges, many colleges talk about the family atmosphere on their campus, but at Brandywine, we really mean it. This past semester, we had twenty pairs of siblings, five of which were twins. Nikki Pousant, who graduated in May, is one of ten members of her family to have graduated or are currently attending Penn State. And Advisory Board member Michael Bradley is one of twenty in his family. And speaking of our Advisory Board, fifteen of our sixteen members are Penn State alumni, and eleven attended some of or all of their classes at Brandywine. And when Mark was a member of our Advisory Board, that applies to him as well. They are committed to our success and are incredibly valuable to our campus as mentors, ambassadors, and contributors. People, programs, and facilities. We bring together these key resources, all for the benefit, all for the benefit of our students, creating opportunities for them to learn, to make a difference, to realize their potential, and to be engaged. Student engagement and community involvement are hallmarks of Penn State Brandywine. Engaged students are more likely to be successful students. To that end, we offer many co-curricular and out-of-classroom opportunities, including undergraduate research, internships, global studies, and community service. Our students are actively engaged in undergraduate research, working alongside faculty members in a lab or in the community, individually, or as part of a group. Completing serious, high-quality research requires critical thinking, analysis, and creativity. Research immerses students in their field and develops their leadership skills. Undergraduate researchers can be found across the arts and humanities, social sciences, physical and biological sciences, and engineering. They come from all class levels, including, including first-year students. Our students collaborate with faculty to present the results of their work at our campus, at local, regional, and national meetings, and in peer-reviewed journals. For example, the Brandywine Child Development Lab is unique. If you go on the tour tomorrow, you will see it. It incorporates both undergraduate research and community outreach. Research assistants work alongside a human development and family studies faculty member to explore how infants and toddlers learn about the world around them. Researchers collect data and work with families at our on-campus laboratory space, as well as in the community. Our students design experiments, run participants, analyze data, and present their work at conferences. Alexa Anderson, shown there, is a rising senior majoring in Communication Sciences and Disorders. She received an Erickson Discovery Grant to conduct research this summer in our Child Development Lab, where she is studying children's language development and technology use. Alexa lives in New Jersey and transitioned to University Park last fall as part of our Two Plus Two program. While she's no longer linked to Brandywine by enrollment status or geography, she chooses to maintain her relationship with our campus and complete her research here. You will meet her tomorrow if you go on the tour. As mentioned earlier, we work to build enduring connections with our students. Internships allow students to apply classroom learning to real-world experiences. About two-thirds of our graduates, and I think that's low, complete at least one internship, some many more. The benefits are many. Students increase self-awareness, develop skills, refine their interests, build a professional network, improve employment prospects, and they certainly do build impressive resumes. Our students have interned at a variety of organizations, from large corporations like SAP, which is just down the road, and United Airlines, to small and mid-sized businesses, to nonprofit associations and social service organizations. Studying abroad exposes students to new cultures and broadens their worldview. Brandywine Global Programs offers courses that include short-term travel with pre- and post-travel coursework. This model, which when we began it was unique, helps increase participation among students with time constraints and limited financial resources. For many, for many of our students, studying abroad is their first chance to travel internationally. For some of them, it's their first chance to travel outside of the Commonwealth, and for some of them, it's their first time to travel outside of Delaware County. Brandywine students have traveled to Ireland, Martinique, Italy, Malta, England, Spain, France, completing courses from art to language to business to kinesiology. Several Global Programs courses include a service learning and civic engagement component. After all, we are Brandywine. During a trip to Puerto Rico this past March, Brandywine students helped to restore mangrove plants that were damaged during a hurricane. Our students gain valuable leadership experience through student government and campus committees, and by serving as orientation leaders, resident assistants, peer tutors, and Lion ambassadors. Students lead our many clubs and organizations and offer, often start new clubs to address their own interests. We honor student leaders each spring at our Rewards and Recognition Night, where we highlight the year's achievements. Chevelle Thomas, shown there, is a wonderful example of a student who is committed to leadership development. You may recall that she spoke to the board at a retreat two years ago, a year and a half ago. She has overcome many challenges to pursue a college education. Last year, she was president of our Lion ambassadors and vice president of student government. We've watched her confidence grow as she had become a respected campus leader, and she will be a senior this coming year. One of our most active student organizations is the Multicultural Club, which works closely with our multilingual students program. Our international students, which is a growing number of students, share their culture and heritage through celebrations, events, and forums, and we are enriched certainly by their presence and their involvement at Brandywine. Brandywine's athletic programs help students achieve success on the field and in the classroom. Nearly fifteen percent of Brandywine students are part of our sixteen intercollegiate athletic teams. More than half of them received academic all-conference honors last year, and many have been recognized with prestigious awards for their academic as well as their athletic achievements. Athletes learn leadership, they learn teamwork and self-discipline, they serve as representatives of our campus, and they embrace our commitment to community service. Athletics also play a key role in our recruiting and retention efforts for sure, and athletics is one of the most effective channels for engagement with campus alumni and families of current students. We don't measure the success of our athletics program by wins and losses or trophies. However, I can tell you, we've done very well by those standards. We recently earned the Chancellor's Cup, which is awarded to the conference's best overall athletic program for the third straight year. And our men's soccer team won Brandywine's first national championship last fall. Last year, we were excited to launch Brandywine's Center for Ethics and Civic Engagement. The center encourages our students to become active citizens, to find creative, effective ways to serve the campus, as well as local and global communities. Among its inaugural activities, the center organized a campus-wide voter registration campaign and coordinated our social justice fair. The center also led our Martin Luther King Day of Service, which involved more than two hundred participants. And during the past academic year, our students participated in more than twenty-five campus and community events organized by the center. We strongly encourage our students to participate in community service, both individually and through clubs and other joint efforts. Last year, our Civic and Community Engagement Club held two to three volunteering events every month, providing more than eleven hundred hours of service to our community. Students visited a local senior center twice a month, leading games, sing-alongs, cultural activities. At a preschool in Chester, our international students gave monthly presentations on culture to three- to five-year-olds. A local food bank benefits from several campaign collection drives each year. Our cross-country team volunteered as dog runners for an annual shelter, and for many years, our students have supported Thon. Students in the Youth Development and Social Justice Capstone Course spent the spring semester supporting children and teachers at an elementary school in North Philadelphia. One of our most rewarding partnerships is with nearby Tyler Arboretum, a 650-acre public garden. Among our many activities with Tyler, students and faculty have taught visitors about energy use and consumption, and explained, explained the environmental impacts of single-use plastic straws. Think about that the next time you go to a restaurant. Our outreach programs benefit the local community by sharing campus facilities and resources, as well as the expertise of our students, our faculty, and our staff. Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Options, STEM Options, is one of our most successful outreach efforts. The program provides seventh and ninth-grade girls with a one-day immersive STEM experience to encourage their pursuit of an education and career in STEM. You should be here on those days. It is very, very noisy. STEM Options also offers resources for middle and high school teachers and a writing contest for local girls in grades three and twelve, three through twelve, excuse me. Brandywine's outreach also includes hosting shredding and pharmaceutical collection events, emergency response training, and legislative expo highlighting services for seniors and environmental resources. On an ongoing basis, the community has access to our library and tennis courts, as well as our athletic and cultural facilities. As part of the Invent Penn State initiative, Brandywine Boost offers support to entrepreneurs and owners of small and medium-sized businesses. Our faculty, staff, and students use their knowledge and skills to mentor business owners. Services include one-on-one analysis and advising, and workshops for larger groups. Many of the Brandywine Boost clients are matched with classes in business marketing or information sciences and technology where teams of students, and this is very important, address a particular need for the business. Projects have included inventory management, website development, accounting, and social media and marketing strategy. Working to address actual challenges identified by business owners allows students to experience real-life application of lessons learned on campus. Laurel DeFonzo was part of an Information Sciences and Technology class that designed a website for a local craft store. After graduating in May with a degree in IST, Laurel continues to work with the business owner to support her e-commerce activities. The Lansdowne Economic Development Corporation, another of our Brandywine Boost clients, is working to revitalize the first-generation suburb near Philadelphia. A key part of their strategy is promoting a vibrant arts community, and they converted a vacant building into creative coworking space. We provided a micro grant to purchase a kiln that is being used to attract additional artists and to offer community classes. Future plans include renovating another part of their building into a makerspace. To further support that town's initiative, students in a marketing class conducted a consumer, a consumer research study for the Lansdowne Farmer's Market, which is managed by the Lansdowne Economic Development Corporation. Student engagement and outreach efforts strengthen our campus commitment to sustainability. For us, sustainability is both a value and a practice, incorporated into our academic programs, our landscaping, and our facilities, and our community activities. We host environmental workshops, celebrate Earth Day, offer an environmental inquiry minor, and an earth sustainability certificate. Our Resident Hall and Student Union are LEED certified. Our campus earned a pollinator-friendly designation, and we designed an award-winning organic garden. Through Penn State Sustainability Communities Collaborative, we have developed projects with four community partners. We participate in Penn State's Green Pause Program. Did you know we had a Green Pause Program? Which encourages faculty and staff to use resources more efficiently. And we're one of only two campuses to achieve Level Three of that program. In 2012, Penn State Brandywine was among the country's first colleges designated as a fair-trade university, and we continue to promote the use of fair-trade products. So, how do these engagement and community impact efforts translate to individual student success at Brandywine? Well, I'm always eager to share the stories of students who are having transformative experiences because they're taking advantage of our opportunities. Katya Yatsenko embraced undergraduate research as a freshman and presented at a parasitology, parasitology, parasitology conference the summer after her first year. She's been a Lion ambassador, honors student, STEM options volunteer, and vice president of the Garden Club. From her room in our Residence Hall, Katya tutored students in China who were learning English online. And she spent the spring semester studying in Singapore. Would you believe she accomplished all that in only two years? Katya just finished her sophomore year. Katja just finished her sophomore year and will transition to University Park this fall to complete her degree in biochemistry and molecular biology. Rising junior Victor Fikara has been just as motivated during his two years at Brandywine. Victor is a Schreier Honor Scholar, a Lion ambassador, and a member of the tennis team. He presented his research at our campus symposium and traveled to Malta, Italy, and Ireland with Brandywine Global Programs. Victor just returned from several weeks in Thailand as part of Schreier's international programs. He plans to complete his business degree right here at Brandywine. I can't stop, there's, there's more. Maddie Malfara conducted research in biology and presented her work on campus and at University Park. I cannot pronounce her research. I will not try. She was a Lion ambassador, a peer tutor, and a starting player on our women's softball team. Maddie received awards for research, athletics, and student leadership. A few hours after graduating in May, Maddie posted on Facebook about her experience at Brandywine. I'd like to share her words with you. Quote, "Freshman year, I couldn't stop crying because I wanted to go home. And now I'm crying because I never want to leave. Bwine gave me some of my best friends, the greatest mentors, and a passion for science. It inspired me to be my best self every day, and for that, I will be forever grateful. I don't think any Penn State student could offer us a higher compliment than to say we inspire them to give their best every day." As my time at chancellor comes to an end, I reflect on my career in higher education. And I can say, without hesitation, that what I've experienced at Brandywine is truly, truly I'm incredibly proud of this campus, our faculty, our staff, our alumni, and most of all, our students. Their accomplishments have impressed me, their personal journeys, journeys have inspired me. The story of Brandywine is a story of growth and transformation, both for our students and for the campus itself. We adapt to change here, we take advantage of new opportunities. We are well-positioned to meet the needs of our students and our community. Now, I could take credit for this, I could stand here and take credit for it, but it has been a team effort. Thank you to all of you in the back who are part of that team. Because of you, the future is bright for Penn State, and I am honored to have been a part of building that future. Brandywine will always have a special place in my heart. Thank you.
That's the second time I was brought to tears today. So, thank you. There's a wonderful accomplishments that you and your team has, have accomplished, and some great stories about some wonderful students. So, thank you for that. I again want to thank the Penn State Brandywine for welcoming the Board, our administration and our staff. You and your colleagues have provided us with an amazing experience, and I hope in some small way, we've added to the campus community with our visit. We look forward to spending another day here tomorrow for our annual professional development retreat and touring this lovely campus. I now ask Frank Quadino to come to the podium to announce the election results.
For the position of Chair and Vice Chair, we had thirty-six votes cast, with nineteen affirmative votes required for election. Trustee Damley received twenty-four votes, trustee Oldsie received twelve votes. For the position of Vice Chair, trustee Skyler received thirty-six votes. Each of the other incumbent officers and Ms. Gardner received the requisite number of affirmative votes to be elected. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Frank, and thank you, Board, for your confidence in me to continue for another term, and for Matt, look forward to leading the Board of Trustees for another year. Thank you very much. Before I call for adjournment, let me once again thank our colleagues and friends here at Penn State Brandywine for welcoming us, for your generosity and the time you spent in planning for our meetings. It's been an honor to be a guest of this great campus, and thank you all. Are there any other matters to come before the Board? Hearing none, we're adjourned. And for those who are participating in the first retreat session, we will begin convening in Room 114 of the Student Union Building promptly at three o'clock. Thank you.